Welcome to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners' monthly meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So we would like to ask everyone to please stand at this time. And we have Commissioner Tony Brown that will do our pledge in a minute. And Commissioner Barry Peters will lead us in our prayers.
Let's pray. Gracious heaven and Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for this beautiful day, Lord, the sunshine. And Father, we just want to say thank you for the privilege to be able to serve the people of McDowell County. While I pray that the decision be made tonight, be made in accordance with what's best for the county. While I preach, you forgive us of our sins. Thank you for your Son, Jesus, that died upon our cross. Forgive us of our sins, Lord, and save us. Thank you for our county. Thank you for our country, our military, Lord. We pray for them tonight, as we've got family and friends to be deployed in a few months. And God, we just pray for their protection. Just lead us, guide us, and direct us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Praise your leaders, fit the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. At this time, gentlemen, we have the minutes for two sessions, the regular monthly session and the DSS session. What's the pressure of the board concerning approving the minutes?
Which is it?
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Okay, we do have the agenda before us tonight. County manager has two additions to tonight's agenda. They are the FEMA grant and Friends of Late James State Park. What's the pressure the board adds to these two items to the agenda? To approve the agenda? Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Okay, let's move to the first item on our appointment schedule. We have Mr. Chad Ray, distinguished Chad Ray, might I add. A big Duke fan, everybody knows that in McDowell County, not a state fan. But he has a young lady with him tonight that's going to be doing something special and big. And so Chad, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, welcome. Thanks for having us. Welcome. This is Haley Lawls. Want me to senior?
Yes.
A rising senior at McDowell High School. She's one of our 4-Hers. I think she's been in 4-H.
Over eight years.
Yeah, eight years. I was thinking longer than that. She's been very active, different things. She's done her horse program, livestock judging, her shooting sports. Probably most active is her livestock judging program where she's on her state champion team last year. They recently had their state contest two or three weeks ago. And they've been all over southeast, the eastern seaboard, all the way to Oklahoma. So they're very active. But the reason she's here tonight is she's our youth representative for McDowell County for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Association meeting coming up in Greensboro, end of August. This is a partnership the 4-H has been doing with the County Commissioners Association for eight to 10 years, eight, nine, 10 years, something like that. Each county is encouraged to select someone to send, and they represent the youth voice from the counties from across the state. It's a chance for them to get to know our county commissioners, the county commissioners to get to know our youth and what the youth needs are in the community. In our county, we have the great advantage that you know what 4-H is. You all know what 4-H has been doing. A lot of counties, it's not that way. So that's the bridge. That may be the only opportunity they may see their 4-Hers or learn about what 4-H's doing and what's going on with the youth in their community. Like I said, here in McDowell, we're lucky we don't have that problem. Y'all are very supportive. You come up and ask how the program are, and you ask specific questions. I know that you are paying attention. But part of it, the qualifications or requirements for her to go is to come attend a meeting, come speak, and have a picture made with you guys. But I'll give the floor to Haley. You're welcome. Ask her any questions?
So as Chad said, I'm Haley Lawls. I am with 4-H, and I also participate in McDowell High FFA, and I'm vice president.
Good job.
So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
What do you, so your specialty, it sounds like, is the livestock judging, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's great. So you shoot too, though, right?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
We had a tournament this weekend, and hey, it was shotgun, rifle, and archery. I don't know if you know it yet or not, but she's qualified for our state tournament coming up September. But she's very active. Before you have something, she and her brother is usually there.
Yeah.
And the horse program is just amazing, 4-H. I'll just say this, I'm going to have the board. The 4-H program is one of the best programs in McDowell County. You know, every year we get to attend the banquet with y'all and get to hang out with you and have a good meal and then learn about what all y'all do during the course of the year. And that 4-H program, I encourage everybody to get their kids involved in 4-H. Get them out of the video games, sitting there zombied out playing video games. Get out there and enjoy what God's given us and learn. And so we're so proud of you. Let's give her a hand, everybody, for representing. Great job. Really, the great place out on the fly is right there. Now, any other questions by board members? If not, we're going to get a picture made, guys. It's an honor. We get to get a picture made with you. So if you want to come right in the middle, we're going to come out there with you, okay? Chad, you going to come up?
Yeah. Yes.
You're, you're, Chad.
Chad, you need to get a picture.
Yeah.
Molly, can you?
Had to wear a clean tie, my boss.
Where you want me to stand?
Here, Chad, man.
How you? It's not a little bit.
I might have to look.
Is there a hurry?
Yeah.
Hit me out.
Thank you, folks. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. We appreciate it. You represent as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make it better. It's a place, like a home run.
Home run. Keep playing baseball.
All right, y'all. One of the fun things that we as commissioners get to do is to get to see our potential and future leaders right there. And so we've got, McDowell County can be comforted in knowing that we've got great young people coming up, that one day we'll be in leadership positions here. And so we're so excited about the future of McDowell County. With that being said, let's move to item, well, we're a little ahead. Let's go to item A under old business facilities updates. Mr. Wink, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. We have Public Services Director Terry Depoister here with us, who can maybe give this update on facilities. For a while, while it's coming up, we just had courthouse update, because that was really about the only thing going on, which has ended up itself a huge deal. But we had a lot of other things happening these last few months, thankfully getting to the end of several of them. He's got a, I think you've got the memo in your packet. He'll just cover some of the highlights, including the courthouse, but some of the other things, so we're all informed about them.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Once again, I have enjoyed over the last five to six months now, a monthly attendance and being involved on a monthly basis. We wanted to give you updates on a regular basis, but again, be able to highlight some of those updates. And tonight, I want to introduce new staff, too. So I think at the top of the list, one of the most exciting things I want to share with you tonight is, as of Friday, we have the animal shelter and facility maintenance on City Sur. And that is a highlight for a day for me, because we've been waiting on that for years.
How often did, was it planned?
Sometimes, the main job is three times a week. So at least twice a week on a regular basis. And so that is a huge relief, plus another item to get us in compliance at that facility. It provides a better facility for both of them. So we're very excited. So thank you for that. That was the city project and grant funding, and also our funding that helped get that across 226 for the hotel facility. And we got, there's one of the benefits of it already. In the projects update that we sent out to you, in the third courtroom and the courthouse updates, the basement level outfit on the public defender's office is underway, about 50% completed. They have the HVAC roughed in. They have sheet rock walls up. They have electrical roughed in. And again, about 50% completed there. The new courtroom is in use. You were there in part participation in the dedication of that courtroom being used on a daily basis. We had some changes to some furniture and some display items that are coming in for the audio video. And by the end of this month, we'll have all that changed out. Few items with HVAC, we had to really update because it was blowing so strong, it was blowing the doors open. So we got it pressure tested, got it adjusted, and we don't want our money going out the door. We want it staying in the door. On the existing Superior courtroom, the ceiling is completed, the new LED lighting is completed, the rough in for the HVAC is completed. That is a new gas pack furnaces that are going in for the existing Superior courtroom. So that rough in is done. You're seeing the windows replaced on the front of the courthouse and on the courtroom. So all of the east side towards the administration building is already completed. But that front street side is a little more effort, a lot higher, a lot harder for them to get to. And there was a lot more work, again, on the outside. So that part is being done. Then we have the second floor of the old jail that is already completed in the renovation phase there, on the DA's space on the third floor, new office occupancy. We're about two to three weeks out on that. They are working through punch lists where we walked through the first time, but a few little corrections to be done to walls, lighting, space, everything through there. Again, when hauling a hammer, it goes through a space, it's going to be completed to all of our satisfaction before it's ever signed off. So we're excited to do that. Again, about two to three weeks out, and we ought to be moving District Attorney across. Then moving on down to Nemo Water in the Stacy Hill Road Project, we have about 65, 67 customers now online on that new Stacy Hill project. Charter's a freedom display. This will be the last month. You see that on the highlight. Great project and a very well-finished project that all of y'all were a part of, and we had a great day that day and the dedication of that. So we're glad to see that being used and being, already being groups coming on a regular basis. The public defender's office, I mentioned that, they are still operating in their current space on West Court Street. Administration building, we have some updates there. They're still going on down here with the tax assessing offices and renovations there. Board of Elections is in their new space and occupying it, really, and they really didn't close down any day at all, but their first true day of operations at the new facility was Friday, August the 2nd. And so everything is relocated there and the facility they're operating. Under the former pilot plant, you'll see that we have met with staff there, communicated some drawings out to them, and they are looking at feasibility for that space and what can be done there. Anything else there on courthouse updates?
The problem taken care of, or we had to burn a little problem at courthouse?
Yes. You know, actually, that, again, a big shout out to the group that responded. You're talking about the downstairs? Yes, so very minimal, very minimal. The only loss we have is truly the air conditioning unit, because there was not even enough to file a claim for it to be restored when all that space was to be renovated. So all we did was go in and demo out and add in some air filtration and HEPA air, and we were very fortunate.
The one that taken like $100,000.
That's right.
Computer quit.
That is the true landmark of the hub of the communications and the phones and everything for the courthouse, the courtroom, and all the operations courthouse. And it was timing that somebody was where they were at and the response and the people that day.
Exactly.
That was, we were very fortunate. And we've already went in, it took an incident like that to really get our attention to think we needed to add HVAC in that space in the renovation project. But we also went ahead now and installed a, what we were going to put in as a temporary HVAC unit to cool the space and decided we'd leave it in place, because that way you have a backup if the main unit fails. Overhead, we got air we can switch over to and no loss of use. So it really, little things like that happen sometimes for intentions. Anything else on courtroom, courthouse updates, facility updates that get your attention? Any questions?
The outside, I know that part of the remodel going on of the existing admin building and then the courthouse, and it's going to be cleaned. But the pebble, little pebble stuff, now they've still got to come in here and get all that.
That's great. A lot of that has been one time passed by to take the rough off. We were tired of stepping on it and the risk of it coming down. So they did a pressure test all the way through the first time. The second time will be a true adherer test and a prep before you paint and finish. I think it'll be very nice. Once we get through, and again, that involves pressure washing and sealing of the brick with existing courthouse, all the way down the white wall as we know it now, to both levels, and both levels of the parking deck being repaired and seal coated and traffic finished, which is truly the roof of this building, which we'll get many years of life out of again.
Again, I think it would be good to repeat what the judges have said, and they are looking at the test with what's been done over there. And so we need to make sure that the public does know that, that they certainly are happy with it, and we want to make things happen.
That's exactly right.
And what was great, too, was the input. This board allowed the judicial staff to have unlimited input. And I appreciate our staff listening to what they had and the news they had, and then our board, and you guys were responsive to the whole situation moving forward and through the process. Hats off to everybody involved. Terry, you know, you learned a lot. And we appreciate you, and your department.
If you have nothing else on facilities, tonight, the second half of our update in Public Services, I'd like to introduce new Deputy Director Jimmy Lewis, that is in Public Services now. His main focus has been on the waste collections, the waste disposal, the garage, the convenience sites. And so he's going to talk to you briefly on what we're doing there. We gave you a copy of the brochures that are available now to the public. We've been distributing those out, both in English and Hispanic versions. So those are at the convenience sites, those are at the scale house, they're at public facilities, so people have access to them. So I'll introduce to you tonight Jimmy Lewis and let him talk to you men.
Jimmy, get ahead.
Thank you. Good to be here. I just have three main things that I'm working on right now, is on the seven convenience centers that we have. We have the 226 South site that is the heaviest used. We have the Nebo, Woodline, Greenlee, Crooked Creek, Sugar Hill, and Dodgerville sites. And currently, I'm working on the traffic flow through the sites. Right now, people go in and they just kind of back where they want to go and leave when they want to leave. And I think it needs a lot of signage in there to help direct them where they need to go and where they don't need to go, I guess for the safety, you know, of the residents, for sure. All but the 226 site and the Crooked Creek are, they're overgrown pretty well. The trees are leaning over the fence line, and a couple is failing. They've got a little dents in a couple of the bars on the fence line. But we do have pricing for all that, and hopefully, we can get that fixed pretty soon, so for the safety of everybody. But our Sugar Hill site has issues with the pavement in front of the dumpsters. It's got like a washboard effect where the truck is so heavy, it pushes down. And we got some pricing on that, too, but hopefully, we'll be getting that fixed pretty soon as well.
All right. Great, Jimmy. Welcome aboard with us.
Thanks.
We're glad to have you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mike, or? Well, we're honored to have him come on board with us. Jimmy comes to us with over 15 years of past experience in his previous employ with waste collections and disposal. And in the last five years of his previous employ, he was a supervisor. So he fit right in here. He knew people, he knew the process, and we're proud to have him on board. So I appreciate that a lot.
Right. Sounds like another good hire.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, let's move to our 515 appointment. This will be tax collector items. We have Linda Arnie Frey, one of our shining stars here. So we had to welcome to the boardroom. The floor is yours.
Shining star. It's like 10 times our boy. Hi, everybody. So I'm here to submit the 2018-19 tax settlement documents, which you guys received earlier, and a single bill copy of the unpaid personal and rental property taxes with an outstanding balance of $142,000 out of a $20 million. I think it's pretty good.
Pretty good.
It's pretty. So anyway, so the collections for our 2018-19 tax year, our collection rate was 99.3. That is the best ever. And that is 8% of my staff, that goes for my staff. 8% from last year is a 99.22. That keeps us always in the top 15 out of 100 counties. So I think we do pretty, my staff does wonderful. I'm so proud of them. And our delinquent collections was $175,715, which was an increase of 16% from last year. So, and that's really it, unless anybody has any questions.
We know that it don't slow down for you guys over there, and we know sometimes that y'all take some heat that.
Yes, they do.
You have to be real patient with. We appreciate it. Really do. We know what you have to do.
Very proud of your department.
I am, too. I tell you, I've got the best girls, and I couldn't do my job if it wasn't for them. And they do, they do make me do very well, so.
Winning the top 15 in the state is pretty impressive.
Worked just every year. We just keep trying to get, you know, up there to number one.
That's right. You'll get there. It's accomplishing you.
Anyway, so does anybody have any questions or?
What does the order of collection need to?
Yes, I need to, of course, get my settlement approved and the order of collections to approve for my next year, 19, 20.
Okay, what's the pressure of the board concerning those two items?
Pressure of settlement and the order of collection.
Second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side. Okay? All right, Linda. Thanks so much. Have a great evening. Your staff, we said thanks for job well done.
I will. Thank you.
All right, we are just a tick ahead, so let's go down here, pick up item B under old business, the Greenway update. And we understand the new Greenway is about complete, but it's not finished. So that's your, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harmon is here, too. Terry just left. All three of us, in addition to several other staff members, have talked a lot lately about our new Greenway park that's weeks from opening. Was out there Thursday with Mr. Abernathy. We'll talk about that in a second. But it's looking wonderful. We have a few minor things to do still, a few signs and a gate here and there, temporary things up now. But it's really come together and have the thought today and the discussion that, you know, this is maybe like the first part of, you know, really something we can build on out there to continue to add amenities that weren't accomplished in this project. But as people come up with ideas and suggestions, we can certainly add as funds and time allow. Our goal is to have a ribbon cutting officially open the park following mid-September. They give a little more time for those last-minute things that we're still working on. So again, it looks great. We never want to, you know, sit on our hands and just say, wow, we did a great job. Let's look at other things. We want to keep building on our projects and our successes. And this is definitely one area with trails that we want to keep going and keep continuing. So we've talked in this room before that NC DOT had funds appropriated or set aside for additional Greenway extensions in that vicinity in future years. It'll be a little off, but it was about $750,000 of federal funds that required a local match. And so again, it was a few years off. The city of Marion had funding a little bit closer. That was identified for another trail, I believe, the Peavine. There were some issues there with a huge match, maybe about $300,000. But they communicated to us and the state, they were not able to meet. They love the Peavine, a lot of people do, but weren't able to pull that off. There had been a suggestion to take that state and federal money and shift it to the River Greenway. And so we, Mr. Chairman, noticed this conversation took place. We spoke to DOT, it was a hard no, that that just can't happen. And so we tried, tried again, and it was approved. So there's additional money is being made available for the River Greenway. And you see the breakdown in your packet. They changed up the timeline just a little bit about when those funds would be available to starting this coming federal fiscal year, which is October 1. There will be $160,000 of federal funds available for preliminary engineering. And you've got that on page 64, so PE stands for. There's a $40,000 local match that's required. For fiscal year '22, again, October 1 of 2021, there's $120,000 with a $30,000 match for right-of-way acquisition. And then in fiscal year '24, there's $1.9 million with another local match of $480 for actual construction. This has been approved by the DOT board. This is in the plan and barring any change, we see no change. This is how things will flow for future years. So again, more or less, you're taking the money that was going to be available for Peavine, put it into the final floor state trail out of the river. So it's good news. It is a challenge, because there are local matches and there's work to be done, but I think we're up to it. The first part I mentioned is preliminary engineering. Mentioned Mr. Abernathy and I and others were at the site Thursday, and we met with the engineering firm that does this type of work all the time, and that I believe they are interested in working on this project, perhaps when the time is right. So what we're asking for tonight, not asking to start construction with shovels or bulldozers or backhoes or anything, but we are asking for authorization to start the preliminary engineering process, which there's a, everything with DOT is a process, especially with federal funds involved. We have to have a municipal agreement, there's an RFQ, this, that, and the other. So we're essentially asking to allow that process to start to where, when October 1 rolls around, we're ready to go as far as engineering and get the design started.
Okay, comments or questions for staff? Here again, we'll highlight the partnership between the city, the county, and the Trails Organization, just here again, moving forward. This will be potentially phase two for us?
I have a question. Is it phase four or phase three, part two? My name had to come up with a new label for it, but.
Okay, any other comments, questions? What's the pressure of the board?
We authorize staff to proceed with the engineering process.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, light side.
If I may, before noon, there is a possibility of always, I mean, there's always possibility of grants out there, but we've had discussions with the Trails Association about call sharing my grant rider, and we're still working on that conversation about what that would look like as far as county dollars, NTA dollars, et cetera. So don't have a proposal in front of me tonight, but if it's okay, if there's a consensus or a vote, we wouldn't perhaps like to have that conversation. We could talk about it at our next committee meeting. like to have that conversation. We could talk about it at our next committee meeting as far as a proposal to where he could be looking at construction grants sooner than 20.
Which might even soften our skin in the game on future, this future project and others. Correct?
Yes, sir.
At a, we use grant writers and we, the cost is minimal compared to what they bring in.
Exactly.
What's the pleasure of the board?
We approve.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. You pose a light sign.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have a 5:30 appointment concerning a economic development update. So Mr. Abernathy, who is our economic development coordinator, sir, if you don't mind, come on up. And the board welcomes you to the boardroom, which you're no stranger to, be a former county manager. Go ahead, sir.
Maybe a following star instead of a riding star.
We didn't say that, Chuck.
It's always a pleasure. And I think I've got some good news. Ashley, you helped me, helped me with this. What you guys just did with the trail is sometimes things are very big and they don't necessarily come across as such. But, but what you just did is huge. It's close to $3 million of money that is going to be available between resistive flex road and connecting with the, with the current Greenway. It's going to connect them with Dow House, Carson House, and Round Hill. And ultimately, it's going to connect Bonham and Burke on a, on a Greenway. It is, it's a big deal. And I appreciate you guys doing it because that is economic development as well. Got four things. I'm going to try to not, not talk too long. We, we had a public hearing scheduled for tonight. And that has been put off a week because the, the circumstances surrounding that have been, have been changed. But that will be next Monday. It needed to be re-advertised. We've got a project with 53 jobs that we hope to announce next week. The, the product is, is kind of an outdoor-related product that will fit in real nicely with, with, with how we, we see ourselves in the, in the future. So it's really a pretty, pretty special project. Been working on it for about four months. So more on that. Second is related to the Universal property. And as you know, the board purchased the building and the, close to 300 acres, I guess, some number of years ago. And it, I mean, it just continues to open opportunity for us and just, just is, is going to continue to do so. Not a long speech on this, but the bulk of manufacturing economic activity right now is coming from existing industries that are expanding. And we've had three or four of those. Second, it then goes to existing buildings that are empty, of which we have, we're very limited with. And so we're, we're, we're missing out on, on a lot of that opportunity. Third are graded sites that are what's called shovel-ready, meaning the site is prepared and ready to go. And then last are what we have, which are, are green sites that are rough. So what we're working to do right now is to take this site on the Universal property and, and work towards preparing it. The issue with a, with a shovel-ready site and why I don't come in really pushing local funds to make this move quicker is there are examples of shovel-ready sites that have been empty really for a long time. And so I've been real hesitant to, to push real hard for, for local funding and have focused on federal and state dollars and grants and that kind of thing. So that's, that's what we're going to talk about. Tell you how far we go with buildings. There are a couple of buildings in the county that you don't really think of as being empty that we've pursued to try to be able to use, like the Ethan Allen building, which is half a million square feet. And it's, it's going to have 30 or 40 people working out of it, distribution center. And they've said absolutely no, that they would not allow us to market, say, half of it as a, as a, as a facility. The Jeldwin facility is shut down and essentially mothballed. We call them twice a year and say, you know, how, what's the status on that building? Could we, could we, could we make use of it? So, you know, we, we do try to, to find product. But right now, we're, we're just very limited. So the project that I mentioned previously is going into an existing building. Think about it. Let's say it costs 80 or 90 dollars a foot to build a new manufacturing building. Multiply that by 100,000 square feet. That's major dollars. Multiply that same 100,000 square feet, say by 20 or 25 dollars a foot for, for an existing building. And that's why everything, plus the timing and other, other issues, siting is difficult on new, on new buildings sometimes. So, so existing buildings are, are really still the focus, although the market is, is changing there. So I say that to preface both preparing sites and perhaps having one day a speculative building on, on this property. So we applied to ARC probably four or five years ago for, for funding to assist with the construction of, of two roads, what we call Pond Road and Shell Road. And we got all kinds of phone calls from people saying there's already roads named that, you know, and it's not very creative, that kind of thing. The Pond Road looks over the pond and the Shell Road is the road that goes to where perhaps a speculative building. And that's all. We're not, we're not naming, naming the road. The grant started off, I had forgotten this, at a million 59. Then it was reduced to a million 5. Then it was reduced to a million 2. Then it was reduced to a million. And it's currently at $600,000. And the, the $600,000 has been, is a federal program. And it, so there was, there was a recommendation from ARC staff at almost a million 6. And, and it, it kept, it kept being reduced. We've got 600 and I think that it's all approved, all ready, final, and we now have $600,000 and we're ready, ready to proceed with what we're, with what we're doing. So how do you do 600,000 when you were planning on, on a million and a half? What we'll do is the road that is called Pond Road, which is right here, which is really the nice site right, right here. And the construction of this road, which produces three sites, is still funded. And then what we call Shell Road, which is this long road that is on city property, not county, will be shortened to about right there. And that's all that we knew to do. Thank you. That'll be better than me walking, walking over there. Appreciate it. Pond Road is 916 linear feet. Shell Road, less than, less than 200 linear feet. So you can see the project has been dramatically reduced. What, what we will do is go back to ARC when we get into this process and ask them to up the money. And we'll also, to be honest, we'll be in here not pushing hard, but seeing if you want to participate while the equipment's out there in putting, putting money into it, you know, to finish it off. There, there will be, with the construction of the road, some rough grading of the site around the road, but not finished sites. So we're talking still big dollars to get us to the point of, of doing that. Questions?
You did a great job explaining it, Chuck.
It's pretty clear. I, I know you have people.
You did very, very thorough, Chuck.
People all the time come in and say that they're trying not to spend your money.
You did a good job, Chuck.
Well, if I thought that the expenditure of local dollars would have a real immediate, quick, clear result, I, I would say that. And there's, there are two graded shovel-ready sites very close to us, and they've been empty for a decade. Okay? And that's just the fact. I think if they, well, I won't say that. I, I think we would, we would move them. You also see institutional facilities, commercial facilities are possible, governmental facilities are possible out there as well. We have an engineering contract in your possession with Mike LaVoy. He has been before you, if you remember, he was in here, actually, what, five months ago?
Yes.
Presented this information to you. He has been the, the person that has been working on this from the very beginning when I did site readiness grant, started this whole, this whole process. So questions?
Chuck, what's the action you're requesting here tonight?
I'm sorry?
What's the action you're requesting tonight?
Asking my question on this matter?
No, no. What, what action?
Yeah, is, is for you to approve the engineering.
You have the contract there.
Want me to hurry?
That is an ask.
Okay, comments or questions regarding the contract?
That's on page 45. You've endorsed, probably back in March, I think you endorsed the project and Mr. LaVoy's participation, but we didn't have a contract at the time.
And this is favor of the, of the engineering.
You very well may have, but you've not approved the specific.
Right. It was maybe more theoretical at the time. This is an actual document. The cost is consistent with.
With what we talked about.
Talk about that time, yes, sir.
So we approve.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. You pose a light sign.
Thank you. Real quick, we also met last week with Mark Poole with the Department of Commerce about a water and sewer grant for the property. And while it's not been approved, we think it will be, and that it will be approved this month in the amount of $470,000. You'll have an eight-inch sewer line, gravity-fed, serving the whole track of land. And you'll have a six-inch water line serving Shell Road and, and Pond Road, which gets us again closer to it being shovel-ready. That will require $117,000 of county money, not within this fiscal year. That would be $352,500 of state money for water and sewer. So really, all that's left is the completion, if we did this, would be the completion of Shell Road and then additional grading.
And that's an ask, too?
That's an ask.
That's a question.
Is it, is that pushing water? Because I was reading this, the third item of grant to see is, would push water and sewer also for the Ashwick roadside?
Sure.
The Ashwick roadside?
No, sir. It would be just on the Universal, in other words?
It's a type.
Okay. When I saw it, I'm like, yeah, because.
Is that my type? Probably. It's a eight-inch sewer, six-inch water on this property only. It's expensive.
The city of Marion would own this infrastructure. We did run this through the city of Marion. They were okay with specs, just for information.
Other comments, questions? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
We have a resolution, sorry, on page 44.
The resolution on the, on the resolution.
That authorizes submission of grants.
Thank you.
Our favor say aye. You pose a light sign. Okay, great.
Fourth, going to actually announce a project that we've been working on for over a year. It involves no state dollars, which is why we're announcing it. The one next week, we will not announce. That would come out of the governor's office if that, if that happens. This one has, we, we pushed state programs on this and the gentleman did not want to participate in them. This is an existing company in Florida. We've been working with it well over a year. What he does is he manufactures plastic tables, furniture, Adirondack chairs, nativity scenes, et cetera. So it's basically a plastic operation. He sells his product on Etsy, Amazon, et cetera. And says that he will employ 30 to 40 people within the, within the first year and invest a million, a million and a quarter. You held a public hearing on this. And this was back in February. And the incentive that the county offered was a $1 a foot price on the building. He has signed the lease. He has sent his check in for the month of August. And he's moving equipment into the, into the space. He's essentially in 20,000 square feet of that last section of the Universal building located on the, on the southeast side. As you drive in that corner right there, as you, as you pull in. So he's taken half of that 40,000 square foot section. The incentive was a dollar a square foot. So he's, he's paying, but not $2 a square foot. And that that would be the price that he would pay for, for one year. His name is Joseph Satinsky. And again, he's located, located in, in Florida. He has hired his first McDowell County person, a former supervisor at Ethan Allen. He's real interested in hiring Ethan Allen people. Butch Murray, if you guys know, Butch was a fire chief. And he's, he's actually hired, hired him and will be hiring 30 people. So I'll give the newspaper his, his contact information. You see, he's already started moving in some equipment. There's his forklift, compressor. There's one of his routers. And you can see he's got stuff piled up. It's really, really right at the, right at the beginning. And he's got quite a bit more to bring up. But we're glad, glad that he's, he said he will be in operation for the Christmas season in early October. Questions?
Misses about 30 jobs.
Yeah.
It's great to hear, again, diversity, you know, when textiles and furniture went south, McDowell County got rocked hard. But now, McDowell County's rebounded and we have many diverse job opportunities, which sort of insulates us against that happening again. So.
Real, real big on, on Wayfair as well.
Good deal. All right, Chuck, thanks for being here and your question.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
All right, this time let's move to item A under new business. This is board appointments. And we have one appointment. This is Commissioner Brenda Long, who, for the record, is on FOP trip to New Orleans. So that's why she's not present tonight. But she is on the TAC Board with Isafama Transportation Board. And we normally go ahead and do two readings. But since it's a commissioner, I think we just need to forego having the second reading. She wishes to be re-nominated. What's the pleasure of the board?
Pressure approved, rep. [inaudible].
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, you pose a light sign. Thanks, gentlemen. Let's move to item A, Mr. Wooton. This would be the, item B, the Old Fort School Project Update. Go ahead and bring the board up to speed on that school.
Yes, sir. Again, counties have the obligation to help provide in the construction of schools. And so as far as we're talking about school tonight, we've, previously, you have endorsed the, that project, awarded the financing, et cetera. But we haven't talked about it a lot because it's more so a school system topic of discussion. But recently, there was, has been a conversation, I think it reported in the news a little bit about what had been identified as a fire hydrant slash waterline pressure issue around the school. The best I understand it, there is a standard in the fire code that for especially new construction, there needs to be a certain pressure at hydrants. There's a certain flow requirement and expectation. And as this project has proceeded over the last year or so, the. last year or so, the engineers working for the school system have indicated that the fire hydrants around the school do not meet that fire flow. There are parts, and this is the water lines and hydrants owned by the town of Old Ford. And so there has been discussions with the town about ways to overcome, maybe some restricted water lines, or old valves, or whatever the issue is. There's been a meeting that several, I know the chairman and I attended, with several representatives from the town and the school system, and the school's engineer, Mr. Hamrick, where this item was discussed, to try to get to an understanding of how to overcome, perhaps, an issue with the hydrants and the pressure. Everyone understands it's a town-owned system, but also understand that, you know, the school is going to open in about a year, and there's a desire to meet the fire code requirement. So again, back at the meeting a month or so ago, there was a discussion about, okay, if there's a necessary improvement to water lines to increase the pressure, who's going to pay for it? There was, I guess, an offer made from the town to the county and the school system that the cost of approximately $200,000 be split three ways between the three entities. The school system has responded to the town. They are not able to participate in that funding, so by that admission, they are out of that picture, I guess. And so I guess the question remains with the county, is there interest in participating in a water line replacement project, essentially? Again, at a cost of about $200,000 total. That's the reality of the project, the pressure issue, they ask from the town, and they're, I guess, looking for a response on your interest or not.
Okay, comments, questions?
Just several years ago, we looked, it was on the board, you know, they had some water issues up there, and we looked at some grant money and stuff to try to expand out toward the interstate side. You know, the project kind of fell through there, and everything kind of went south. And I know it's the responsibility of the school, or the town, but you know, get rid of it with the school for educational purposes. Is there, there's no grant money or any matches or anything that we can try to pursue fast enough?
Most, if not all, of the grants for water infrastructure are tied to economic development. Not so much critical community facilities like these. There are probably, there are, not probably, there are loans available for projects of this sort, but not so much grants. Those are almost 100% economic development.
We committed to, how much is it, like, four million dollars?
You once I got the grant on the build?
Yeah, on the construction part.
We have a, we have a $5,000, $4,000, about $5 million, $4 million investment.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. We already have a substantial commitment to this school, and of course, the school board has made their commitment as well. You know, it would seem to me that at this point in time, we need to hear a commitment from Old Ford.
Mr. Rooton did check with the Institute of Government and also legal counsel, and he alluded briefly to that, that a county, since we don't own that water system, that's a town-owned water system, and so it falls back on the town to maintain their equipment. You know, we're in the water business now in Nebo, and so if there's a leak or a break to the school, I don't think we can call the school, the school board and the superintendent, and say, "We've got a leak on our county-owned pipes going to your school, can y'all come in and help us out with money?" And the school board did up a pipe size within the school. The school system has stated that they've got sufficient water that will be contained just in those pipes, irregardless of the pressure at the hydrant. Is that correct?
That's right. There is a sprinkler system in the building, and that was in the papers as well. There was additional funding that went into the facility, really due to some of the uncertainties related to this question. So they went ahead, because they were at that point, they had to make that decision.
And there was discussion also at that meeting, Mr. Rooton, and make sure that I stated correctly, as far as school board members were asking about, is, are you going to run a dedicated line straight to the school? Because there came into play the question of private residents are tapped on that line, and here you are spending, and here again, they got real murky real quick on running the line, using taxpayer dollars for a town and a city infrastructure, then you got, it's like you're subsidizing people who are currently tied in on that. So it was, it got, no pun intended, muddy quick.
I think I would agree with Tony that we need to, we need to see a commitment from Old Ford, what they can and will do.
I think to the question, they indicated at least they would be agreeable to a third of that $200,000 cost.
And two, gentlemen, just to keep in mind, on tonight's agenda, we have voted to spend, what's the new money tonight?
$117,000 on the water and sewer, at least.
I think we tabled it and send it back before the town on, and for a review, and see if they're willing to come back to us with a better offer.
You have a motion or a second?
Second.
Discussion? All favors say aye? You oppose, lights on. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Item C, this would be administrative items, Mr. Rooton, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is, we call it sort of our housekeeping agenda item. These are typically more or less internal items, we need your review. The first item on the list, you have a local homeowner that rents out, a property owner that rents out a home for short-term rentals. There's a realty company that apparently is unaware of the room tax that is charged. So you see the memo there on page seventy-one from Ms. Morgan, they have paid the room tax that was owed, but they're asking of the late fee waiver of over $25,000. So again, they've paid what they would have paid originally from the occupancy tax, they're asking for forgiveness in late fees due to alien awareness.
So the realty company, the property manager then, whoever's handling that for the owner, just failed to comply, right?
Yes, sir.
What was their, what was their statement? What did they say about that?
There is no reference to any reasoning for not doing so.
I believe I'd like to hear that.
We can find out if it was an oversight, what have you.
I table for further investigation, I could agree with you.
Got a motion, got a second discussion? All favors say aye? Okay.
Yes, sir, I'll bring it back. The next item, you have a water leak adjustment from the Nebo system. You have the address there, Watson Road, and a receipt for some plumbing supplies.
Motion, there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all favors say aye? And you oppose, lights on. Cam, Mr. Rooton?
The next item has to do with vehicles. There's a resolution here, a declaration of official intent to reimburse. This is a reimbursement resolution we have done, typically more so with capital projects. The budget you approved two months ago had probably about five or six vehicles spread across different departments. Most departments are not quite ready to purchase those vehicles yet, that our Public Services Department is ready. The, Mr. DePoeister, who drives all over the county every day for his multitude roles, is in a seized 2,000-something Ford Expedition, and it quits about every other day. So he's definitely ready, and they have an additional pickup that's in the request. If you approve this, we will go ahead and purchase the two vehicles, and when the other departments are ready, we will borrow enough money to cover these two. Does that make sense? So we're going ahead and borrowing on, and using our funds, and we'll reimburse ourselves when the funding alone is approved.
Okay, what's the pressure to the board?
We approve.
Discussion, all favors say aye? You oppose, lights on. Cam, Mr. Rooton?
You also have the EMS write-offs, and we're trying to do these every month now, so we don't have years and years behind. And you have that as well. The total there is $37,075.16.
Okay, comments, questions?
I know that when we have to do these write-offs, that it sounds like that we're just giving up a lot of money, maybe, but to the credit of EMS and their staff, they're doing everything they can to recoup every bit of the money that they can, so I just, I'd just like to put that out there.
Okay?
That will approve, second.
Discussion, all favors say aye? And you oppose, lights on. Okay, Mr. Rooton?
The last item, request a clarification as it relates to foster home inspections that we are doing out of our inspections office. So foster homes throughout North Carolina are required to have essentially a fire inspection before they are ever issued a license as a foster home, and whenever they renew their license. So about every two years, it is required to have a fire inspector or otherwise qualified person come do an inspection. Right now, our fee schedule is a little unclear as to in-county foster homes inspections, and it is silent to people that are licensed out of county. Staff would recommend some clarity, so we can provide that to our staff as well as people that are licensed in the county, whoever...
And to shed some light on this, too, what he's saying is, we've got people who are McDowell County residents who are licensed because of conflicts with Rutherford, Yancey, I think, or Mitchell County up here.
Different county.
Yeah, and so that's what he's looking to, and there's some confusion on staff part concerning that. So he's requesting the board just clear it up, and a licensed foster family who's went through the training classes and that resides in McDowell County, we waive it. Now, we're not saying we waive it for group homes.
Right, just foster homes.
Licensed, licensed foster family.
Yes, sir. We had had that, as far as we can tell, for a while, for in-county. It's a little, the language is not clear in the fee schedule, but it's come up several times with out-of-county.
And for the record, I'm a licensed foster family, and we, due to the conflict of being a county elected official, we, our license is in the neighboring county. But I paid the $80,000, just had mine done today, and I feel like as elected official still, I'm going to pay that $80,000, so there'll be no gray area on my end.
I guess I'm maybe a little bit confused. Are we talking about a foster home outside of McDowell County?
No, just inside.
The situs is in McDowell.
Okay.
Regardless of the county of licensure, they're all, that's the request, they're licensed by the state of North Carolina, but the coronating county can be in question.
But they live in McDowell County.
Right.
Other comments, questions? If not, what's the pressure to the board?
What exactly do you need?
We're requesting that inspection fees be waived for licensed foster homes regardless of the county of licensure.
Okay. Well, we are in dire need of foster homes out. I would leave it be waived that fee.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all favors say aye? You oppose, lights on. Okay? Now, let's move to our six o'clock appointment. This is the subdivision ordinance public hearing, and at this time, I will declare the board into a public hearing setting. We do have Mr. Ron Harmon with us, who is a, well, his titles are sort of, what is Ron's exact title now, Ashley?
Deputy County Manager for Community Development.
Okay, there you go.
It's a deputy manager. I'll just answer to anything.
Sounds like somebody must be pretty important to have a title that long.
All right, floor is yours.
Okay, we've requested that the numbers that constitute a major subdivision and minor subdivision be changed. All that changes is who reviews the plats, it doesn't change development standards. So what we're asking is that a major subdivision is 11 lots or greater, which is planning board approval, and a minor subdivision is two to 10 lots, that's staff approval. And that's all we're asking, no change to road widths or lot sizes or anything.
Okay, board members, comments or questions?
I talked right over, and I want to make sure I've got, and Ashley, make sure I've got my question cleared up, and I relayed, you know, my concern, that if you've got children, and the lot size for the small, and I hear what you just said, is two to 10, what if you have three kids, four kids, five kids, you want to give them acreage that always contiguous, and just give it to them, so they may want to build a house eventually, but you divide it up like that. And my concern was that that happened without that division of land falling into a small subdivision.
Is there anything that provisions been made?
We have a family subdivision, but within that family subdivision ordinance, you also have the state's definition of a subdivision, which states that when you divide a land to or more lots for future development or for sale, it has to go before review process.
Now, who's the review process?
That is when staff or the planning board review it to make sure it meets the standards, which is road width, lot size, and things like that.
Can we legally just put a statement in there where if you're going to give it to family, that unless, now, if the family did sell, okay, I get that, if you divide after your kids, and then at some point, the kids say, "Look, we're going to sell mom and dad's land they gave us," and say you've got 100 acres of tract, 20 acres of tract, never going to divide it up, try to sell it as lots, and really ramp up our income potential. That would fall under, to me, a small, most of the number of lots, small or major. But I don't, I don't, here's what I want, that I, before I vote on anything, I want to know, I want to set it right and have a clear understanding that if I have, if I've got three girls, and I want to divide my land after those girls, they grow up, they get married, they have kids, they want to divide that same land out to their kids, I want to make sure that that can happen without them falling into small subdivisions or major, because they're not, they're not giving it for, they're not selling it, they're just living on it and using it.
They're building home, they're farming for profit.
And that's my only concern, there's only two changes to it, plus the fee change, and so that's, I understand that. But I, as a commissioner, I want to make sure that I've got that clear on writing.
It would seem that there would be a provision that could be put in there, that as long as this, as long as said property remains in the family name, you know, passed on to heirs of the family.
heirs of the family, that that would be an exemption.
And I would respectfully ask that you allow us some time to look into that. I did a quick, a quick search this afternoon. Family subdivision isn't something that you see a lot of conversation with. The reason is a lot of counties are zoned, so regardless of what the subdivision ordinance says, a zoning provision is going to override lot size and things like that. So I would like to go back to general statute and maybe the school of government and see if they can give us a definition of maybe how we can word that in our ordinance.
There are issues, and I think you're alluding to a little bit too with the fire code as far as road rumors and we have to make sure we're not running afoul with some of that. I think we definitely, staff here is what you're saying, will not limiting your right and desire to do exactly what you're talking about.
That's the only question I saw as far as one concern I had. Board members, comments, questions before we take it to the public?
Okay?
It was a big thing, particularly, paying for all of them up, penalizing. Key is a big thing.
There are, at some level, exemptions there now.
But don't cover what I just said.
But we'll get it, make sure.
We want to, we want to stay with that black and white where there's no gray area where somebody can interpret it, however they want to interpret it. We may, you may err on the side of the local guy, but the next guy in y'all seats may say, I don't think that. They may bring in some guy from California or some big city hotshot who says, we're going to make this thing so tight that it limits the ability of people on their land to get to their kids.
Family's already been impacted enough by the government, we don't need to bring that down to the county level.
We'll look into that.
Okay. All right, we'll start on this side. Let's see, anybody wish to speak concerning the subdivision ordinance? Just state your name and staff, if you have any questions, we'll do what we can. Is anybody on this side wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Ken Suddles, Land Surveyor. I guess I have only one question about the size of the lot and Mr. Brown, I think you alluded to it just a moment ago, talking about if you have, say, 50 acres and you want to divide it among three children. Quite naturally, if they want to build a home, the property might vary unless you want to loan it to them.
What would you do with them?
Anyway, that's going to require a fee deed be made to each one of the children. And of course, after a fee deed is made, you have then the option of conveying it to whoever. Now, you could rule from the grave, I guess, and put stipulation in there it cannot be sold and so on and so forth. And of course, the courts have ruled, and ruling from the graves, not yet. So I guess my question with the, to Ron, would be if these, let's say we have four children and these four children get four parcels out of this 50 acre tract. These deeds would be fee deeds quite naturally if they're going to build homes. Later, let's say they get 10 acres, whatever, later they decide to give their children a couple acres to build them. Is that, as the ordinance says that exists now, is there a problem there?
As far as giving the property to the heirs, I don't think so. But what you run into is chapter five of the fire code says when a road serves two or more homes, it has to meet subdivision standard. So if you're talking about a piece of land that you've got a road to get it straight through and you've got four lots, then it's naturally going to have to meet subdivision rule. You can branch off from private drives off of that main drive for two additional lots that do not have to meet subdivision standard.
Can you interpret private drives with, is that to meet any state standards or?
A private drive is up to the discretion of the property owner as long as it serves two or fewer homes.
Okay. And I think that would pretty well answer my question because I see that a lot in my profession financially. People come to me and they want to give their children property and sometimes I think of that, I do it anyway. It's not for me to decide financially, but anyway, that was one question I had and of course, that alludes to another question I had and of course, I think you and I maybe can resolve a question about a 10 acre exemption as far as, as far as counties concerned because if you convey 10 over 1 acres and it's more than 10 acres. But I think that pretty well answered my question. You have any question, maybe Ron?
When you're talking about the 10 acre exemption, you understand that if a road runaway is dedicated, that that road must meet subdivision standard?
I do, I think I understand what you're saying. When you said road standards, if it's a private, let's say that you've got 100 acres and you divide it up into 10 lots, 10 10 acre lots. All right, this is a private division of land. Does those roads, when you said must meet the standard, what standard are you referring to, Ron?
Since you're dedicating a runaway to serve those 10 lots, that must meet subdivision road standard, which is 20 feet wide with two foot shoulders on each side.
But that's not a pavement, that's not a surface.
We don't require pavement unless the road exceeds a 12% grade and then only the section of the road that exceeds 12% has to be paved.
I thought it was 18%.
We don't, we don't allow anything above 18%.
Okay, so if it's above 12%, it has to be paved?
Right.
But it can go to 18%?
It can go, 18% is where we cut off and say nothing above 18%. So anything 12% up to 18% must be paved. Everything under 12% can be gravelled.
I think that answered my question there. If these roads are dedicated and they're approved previously to the ordinance, their grandfather being or parent?
Approved previously, before 2000?
Before the adoption, before the 2007, I believe that's.
If it's, if the subdivision has not changed, the widths of the lots and the number of lots and things like that have not changed, it would still stand.
Your grandfather did.
Yeah.
But if that changes, it's not grandfather.
If they add more lots to it, correct, it must meet standard.
Member says, okay, he may as well speak. You have been wrong, okay.
I answered mine.
That's good. All right, you have been wrong. He may as well be right this time, he should speak. All right, they've been the way. On the left this side, we do have a planning board member back here being stationed. Let me say the honorable being stationed. All right. Now, what's up?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. And you oppose last time. Okay. Yeah, just go back to the, have a motion, can you see the motion?
I make a motion, send this back to the planning board and you guys come back to us with some managers on the things that we talked about.
The clarification on the family subdivision.
And Mr. Whitten, we get that in writing specifically what the board has stated. In any way, you've got to get, get line of communication going from here to there and back to your board and then back to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got a motion. Second, discussion, all in favor, most say aye. You oppose last time. Okay, let's move to I and D, tax matters. Mr. Whitten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, you have a couple of items here. It might be better to handle the releases, refunds, discoveries, et cetera, separate from the other issue.
Okay.
Maybe want to handle.
All right, Jimmy, you've had a chance to review those. What's prayers of the board are saying? The releases, rebuilds, discoveries, got a motion, there are second.
With, is that with the exception of law?
I guess just the releases, rebuilds and the exemption, not the big one that Mr. Whitten said. Okay? Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, you oppose last time. Okay? Mr. Whitten, go ahead on the.
Okay, and you've got an explanation on your cover memo there on 79. Probably about two weeks ago, I met with a local accountant, Miss Pam Banner. Apparently, Miss Banner has been working for about 10 years with private clients to do their tax listing. So we knew this, but maybe for the public's benefit, if you own a business in McDowell County, whether it's a computer, a smartphone, earth move or whatever else, you're required by law to list that as property that is taxable with our tax office. And so a lot of folks have employed people like Miss Banner to assist with that process because it can be complicated. And so each year, those businesses are required to list their property by January 31st, listed here with the tax assessing office. Most people who list, whether it's a business or an accountant, they ask for an extension. That extension is 100% granted, there's no question. That extension goes to April 15th. A lot of that has to do with IRS trying to tie in with their schedules, so it just made sense. That's a statute set date. So there's no doubt about April 15th, 5:00, if it's not in per statute, if it's 501, I guess technically it's late. And what that means is that taxpayer, not the accountant or anyone else, that taxpayer will be assessed a late listing penalty of 10% of the tax value. Okay? Not the tax bill, but the value of the property. So in this case, again, Miss Banner is an accountant. We've got her list attached there on page 80 of about 50 mostly small businesses that she assists in their listing. Talking to Miss Banner, again, that's a lot of businesses, the forms take some time, they're complicated and so forth. Anyway, she says on April 12th, which I believe was a Friday, she contacted staff and said, I am just, I'm working on these as diligently as possible. It looks like I might not hit the deadline on April 15th. What she heard was that, okay, don't worry about it, we'll work with you. So that was interpreted as, don't worry about the late listing penalty. It's not, maybe not a big deal, but we'll work with you is what was heard by Miss Banner. So fast forward, the listings were turned out on May 8th, a couple weeks after the deadline. Again, based on that, don't worry about it, don't, we're busy, sort of what was understood by Miss Banner. Fast forward to July, when the bills go out, clients get their bills, they see a late listing penalty and they call Miss Banner and say, what happened? She, of course, calls the tax office and says, you know, I thought you guys were going to work with me. Tax department says, we'll work with you, but we can't waive that late listing penalty only the board can, you know? It's April 15th at 5:00, no ifs, ands or buts. Again, that's not what was understood by Miss Banner. Staff says they feel that was communicated. I have nothing in writing that says, Pam, don't forget, April 15th at 5:00 is the deadline. I have no doubt at some point it was communicated verbally, but I have nothing in writing to verify it was communicated. Not saying that's an error by our staff at all. There's an expectation by accountants of knowing that April 15th deadline. So perhaps a misunderstanding on numerous parts here. So again, what you have, you have, Miss Banner is asking on behalf of the 50 clients, our 50 taxpayers, to waive that late listing penalty because of the misunderstanding.
I understand it. I just, you know, I sympathize with them and as a matter of fact, you know, it would be much easier just to waive it.
This has never happened before, has it?
Not on the scale. We've had.
With this particular?
Not with it, no, sir.
Okay.
Well, I talked to Mr. Whitten about today. I said if you had a paper trail, it'd make it a whole lot easier for a board to decide what to do, what not to do. And I stated that we need to move forward and have staff, when they contact or when they speak to somebody in this kind of position, to go ahead and send an email, put in the file, and that way you'll have a paper trail with what was stated and what was said. And.
There's a, there's a lot of good people who've listed here that bring a lot of revenue to this county through their businesses. And, you know, I think it would just behoove us to sympathize with them and see that they're not penalized for something that was really not their mistake.
Okay, other comments, questions?
I make that a motion.
Okay, my motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, most say aye. Aye, you oppose last time. Okay? Let's move to the two items that were added tonight. First, we'll review the friends of late James State Park and the request for the 5,000 to purchase the machine, please. So Mr. Whitten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, I believe it was the, maybe the June meeting, we had representatives from the friends group here requesting, again, funds for that machine, I think primarily to help clear trails that are in the sections of the park. You're allowed to give funds to nonprofits and this is what this group is, it's a nonprofit. So there's no statutory or constitutional prohibition in doing so.
And we do have this funding available.
We do have the funding. I sensed or heard direction at that time to, since it was late in the budget process, I think after the hearing perhaps, we did find funding. We have a special projects fund for items like this, sometimes funds are set aside that are not expended and so we roll those forward for occasions such as this.
Mr. Chairman, move, approve. Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
This is the second year that we've put it off, basically, so.
Okay, all in favor, most say aye. Aye, you oppose last time. Next item would be, we would add this into business item F. This is a FEMA grant. Mr. Whitten, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Keller contacted me late today. We have applied for a FEMA hazard mitigation grant that would provide a generator at the senior center building. It would provide power to the senior center itself as well as the administration annex and the dialysis clinic, three very vital functions there. This grant would provide that generator at no cost and they're hoping to get that grant in as soon as possible, so we're asking you approve.
Move, approve. Second, second, second discussion, all in favor say aye. All right, let's move to our, see, it's a column, I don't see it on there. But anyway, yeah, here it is, number five. Okay, do anybody prayers or wishes to speak? All right, there being none. So let's move on to the next item, reports, communications. Is there any reports, communications, staff or, and or board members?
I have two items and again, Mr. Mitchell does a great job of informing you of these, but just to make sure, doing my part. Tomorrow, you should be aware of a luncheon honoring SROs. And that's at the high school, it's at 11:30. Again, that's on your calendar. And you also have an invite for something out of county, but perhaps if you're interested, the dedication ceremony and ribbon cutting for the New Broughton Hospital is next Wednesday at 10:00 AM. We have that invite from the state.
Okay. All right, with that being said, defer motion adjourned?
I don't mind.
I need to adjourn until Monday.
Yeah, catch, thank you.
Until Monday.
Okay, motion adjourned till Monday, the, what's that date?
19.
19th at 11:30?
Second.
Okay? All in favor say aye. You oppose last time. Okay, me is adjourned.